And we'll go ahead and get started with a roll call. Kim, may we have a roll call, please?
Thank you. Council President Core.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Here.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next, we have agenda approval. Any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
None? May I have a motion, please?
No move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, approval of minutes for August 5, 2025 meeting.
So move, Madam President.
Second, Madam President. All right, a motion and second and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you so much. Next up, we have payment of bills, and we get those in our emails.
So.
Go ahead.
So move, Madam President.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All right, none? May I have a...all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Okay, we have Michelle Ferguson here with our June 2025 monthly financial report. Always good to see you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council. I will be presenting the June 2025 monthly financial reports. So the first slide is going to be talking about sales tax revenue and the general fund. As you can see, kind of on here, April, not April, but mostly May and June, that the revenues in 2025 are less than they were in 2024. Earlier this year, we were seeing revenues that were very similar, but now, as the year goes on, we're starting to see a decline. And we did budget accordingly, but it will be very close. We will not be seeing those excess revenues that we were in years past. So if you take a look at this little graph here, the orange and the blue lines are 2024 and 2025. And you can see they were pretty much mirroring each other in those first four months, and then we've now started to see them shifting. And as a reminder, the revenues that we get have a two-month lag from when the stores or the sales happen. So the June revenues were from April sales. And so normally, you would kind of expect those to be a little bit higher, people using their tax refunds and all of that, but we just weren't seeing that right now. So next up on this slide, I have highlighted the utility tax revenues. And these revenues are still continuing to come in over budget and over where they were last year. Kind of made a little bit of a chart here on the right-hand side to kind of show you the percent change from the same time last year and the dollar change. So all of the internal utility taxes for water, sewer, and drainage are coming in higher, and about around that three and a half to four percent increase. And then the external utility taxes, which are electric, gas, garbage, telephone, and cable, are mostly doing well, with the exception of telephone and cable. And those have, we've been seeing declines in those over the last few years. I just want to note, though, that with some of these revenues, timing does play a factor in them. So we aren't expecting telephone to see a 19% decrease at year end. It probably will be about a 10% decrease.
Michelle, can you back up one chart, please?
Sure.
So, uh, so the cell tax increase that we just implemented, right, at zero point?
The point one, the one tenth, that has not been implemented yet.
When will they get implemented, also?
That, if the timing works out correctly, we will be able to start getting that collection in January and then see the revenues in March.
March, okay.
Of 2026.
Yep, got you. Thank you.
All right, so next up on this slide is kind of where we are with general fund revenues and expenditures compared to budget and the variance to last year and the year before. So the blue highlighted lines are just saying it's okay, even though the yellow ones might make it seem like it's not so great. So BNO tax, that is paid mostly quarterly, so we're still waiting on that second quarter payment to come through. But you can see the variance from 2024 is increasing, and that's because we had a tax increase this year. And then other is going to be admissions and gambling taxes, and those are also paid quarterly. So we will expect that percent of budget to go up in next month. Licenses and permits is still having kind of a rough go this year due to kind of a slowing in the economy and construction. So we're seeing decreases in cable franchise fees, permit revenues, building permits, and developmental permits. And then the fire contracted services down there on the expenditure side, that looks like it's a problem because they are, they have spent more than 50% of their budget. But that is because of the contribution to the medical retiree benefits, and that is just done in one lump sum, and it's not paid throughout the year. So that'll kind of correct itself as the year goes on. All right, on the other funds overview, this slide, I've highlighted capital resources funds and the criminal justice fund. The capital resources fund does have a slight negative variance for revenues in, from '25 to '24, and that is because of lower REITs that we've been receiving. It's about $500,000 less than we received last year at this time, but still expected to come in on budget or slightly over. And then expenditures, that just has to do with timing of when we transfer projects to funds, so that's not of any concern. And then criminal justice revenues are higher through June than they were of this year than they were in 2024, and that is due to an increase in interest income revenues as well as opioid settlement funds. We only had gotten a small portion last year at this time. And then expenditures, that is higher due to a transfer that we did within the fund from one business unit to another, and that was already budgeted and approved by council. So that's just where that variance comes from. And on this slide, I have highlighted the Councilmanic Debt Service Fund, and that's because it has a negative variance for revenues and expenditures. And that is just because a portion of the Public Works Trust Fund debt was paid off in 2024. And here's kind of a slide of the history from '23 through 2020, the forecast through 2040, of the debt service that we have scheduled at this time. So we have about a little over $12 million this year in debt service payments, and that is for all funds. So it's not just the Councilmanic Debt Service Fund that is paying these. It's other debts from the utilities as well. And then we take a big drop in 2026 when some more debt falls off and the payments are reduced, and then we keep going down. So, and just for reference, back in 2019, our annual debt service payment for all funds was $18 million. And then on the last slide, the Employee Health and Wellness Fund, the expenditures are, is have, has a high variance from 2025, and it doesn't seem like that's an anomaly. It just, the claim payments for the medical costs have gone up, and it will require a budget change before the end of the year. We'll wait a little longer till we know exactly how much we need to transfer, but there is a healthy fund balance within that fund, so it won't need to come from a different fund to pay for that. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Michelle? I think you always do such a good job explaining everything, so thank you. I appreciate you. And then I guess you're here for the second item, for the second quarter supplemental budget adjustment.
And then in December of 2024, the council approved a number of lodging tax grants awards, and one of those was for the Assessor Showre Center. So $25,000 we transferred out of the lodging tax fund and into the Kent Event Center Operating Fund, and then $25,000 will, dollars will be budgeted for that use. And then the other expenditures that have been approved by council total $170,000 in carryforward budgets, which include $110,000 for the 2024 golf admissions taxes and $60,000 for the CBS consulting services for work performed in 2024 but not yet invoiced.
What's CBS stand for?
It stands for, sorry, Continuous Value Services. It's a consultant that helps us with Workday and making sure that we get all that configured correctly. And then the adjustments that are pending council's approvals total 2.295 million. And we need those for a budget change of 1.2 million for the transfer of $600,000 of parks REIT funds to the parks projects, and then $600,000 to budget the expense within the projects. And then a budget change of $770,000 is needed to true up the budgets in the pedestrian walkways projects. That is revenues that we received, and we just never budgeted over the years, and that project's been open for the last 20-plus years. And then a budget change of $265,000 is needed for the transfer of funds from the streets lifecycle to the 2025 plastic markings project. A $47,000 budget change is needed to correct the annual allocation for IT lifecycle from the Capital Resources Fund. So that'll be $23,000 will be transferred out of the Capital Resources Fund and then budgeted within the IT lifecycle projects. A budget change of $36,000 is needed for the court exterior cameras. $17,000 will be transferred out of the trial court improvement funds, and then $17,000 will be budgeted within the facilities project. A $35,000 budget change is needed for the senior center security cameras, and then a $57,000 reduction is needed to close the rental houses demolition project.
What is that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we were all going to ask the same question.
It's, um, it was a parks project that was used to, when they were doing Naden to demo.
That's the roof place? Bill Roof? No, meeting.
The house that was?
I don't know.
Abandoned home?
Chad? He's shaking. He had to get there. I think it's the one right there.
I think it's the abandoned home, right, that we?
Yeah.
Riffing a little bit on this one, but that is the right amount that we used out of one of the remaining Naden Avenue properties that had the repetitive fires over and over again. And so that is what?
Got you. Thank you, Core. Okay.
Any other questions?
Michelle? I have a question.
Yes.
So the, the cameras, what budget is that coming out of?
For the trial court or for the court? Or this, um, the trial court improvement fund is paying for the ones at the court, and that, those only can be used for court improvements. And then the senior center cameras are being paid out of the?
General fund?
Mm-hmm, general fund budget.
Yeah, we've talked about it. I just wanted to confirm that. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Michelle? All right, if none, I'll make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 4520 consolidating budget adjustments made between April 1, 2025 and June 30, 2025, reflecting an overall budget increase of $4,079,930.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Michelle. All right, next, we have ECD, and we have Councilmember Larmour, who's the subject matter chair.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we have two items. Neither one require action. They're both information only, and we'll start with Lindsay Walker and an introduction of the periodic update for the critical areas ordinance.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Lindsay Walker. I'm a current planner in the Economic and Community Development Department. And today, we're talking about the periodic update to our critical areas ordinance. We will be learning about different types of critical areas that we regulate and updates about this project overall. We have a pretty aggressive timeline. We're hoping for hearings in October and adoption in December. However, this could get pushed back a couple of weeks, and we'll keep you updated as that comes to light. So the Growth Management Act requires all cities and counties in Washington to adopt regulations to protect their critical areas in order to preserve the natural environment, wildlife habitats, and sources of fresh drinking water. This also limits development in areas prone to hazards like floods and landslides. Every 10 years, we have to look at our critical areas code evaluated based on the best available science and update that. So we're right at that 10-year mark this year. So the types of critical areas that we regulate in the city of Kent are wetlands, caras, or areas with critical recharging effects on aquifers used for potable water, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, frequently flooded areas or floodplains, geologically hazard areas and shorelines. The critical areas in Boulder, the ones we most often see during development. And then the floodplains and shorelines are both updated at a different cycle. So while they're critical areas, it's not something that will likely be touched during this process. Wetlands are typically areas of saturated water or groundwater that has conditions that support different vegetations. You're typically looking at swamps, marshes, bogs, and similar areas to that. We do have a GIs system that locates We do have a GIs system that locates our critical areas. It's not 100%, but it's based on information that we have in the field and information we get from professionals during development. So this does, do get updated. So this map up here shows the wetlands that we have around the city. Like I said, not 100% accurate, but ba, based on the best information we have right now. Caras or Critical Aquifer Recharge Areas are also known as Wellhead Protection Areas. So they have critical recharging effect on aquifers for potable water, and they have conditions associated with infiltration rates that create a high potential for contamination of groundwater resources or can contribute significantly to the replenishment of groundwater. This is typically something you're gonna see in more rural areas or county jurisdictions, but we do have some in Kent that get looked at if they get impacted. So the areas in red you see on the map are where there would be a wellhead protection area, and then it shows the time of travel for contaminants to get into the groundwater and hit those wellhead protections. So if there's development that could impact this, this does get reviewed. We have Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Area, which also includes our shorelines. So this is mostly gonna be our streams, our naturally occurring ponds, less than 20 acres. Areas where there could be endangered, threatened, or sensitive species or priority species that we will need to protect their habitat. This map, you'll see that larger blue line with the crosshatching is the Green River. There's also additional streams shown, as well as shorelines like Lake Meridian and Panther Lake. Frequently flooded areas or floodplains have important hydrologic functions, but they could present a risk to persons and property. You see, we have this picture from Mill Creek here. It's mostly located in the valley on the west side of Kent, and this map does identify areas that are protected by levees. And then we have geologically hazard areas, which have vegetative conditions that could make them susceptible to different risks from landslides, erosion, seismic or volcanic activities, or other slopes. We also have a map identifying those, so it's seen throughout the city. So far, we've had internal discussions with city staff starting last year, as well as our third-party consultants, who we utilize during development processes when we need some of these critical areas reviewed. Earlier this year, we contracted with our consultant environmental science associates to complete our periodic update to Kent City Code 1106, which is our Critical Areas Code. The best available science and gap analysis was received earlier this month. It has been distributed to staff today, so this will advise our code updates. And then last Monday, we did do a briefing to Landy's and Planning Board. There's a few anticipated areas of study or changes, mostly around the stream classifications being updated and revising buffer widths based on best available science recommendations from ecology and fish and wildlife. We're also expecting to update language for clarifying purposes, for reviewing exemptions. And currently, for wetlands, we have our third-party consultants involved in that process throughout all development. So we're proposing language to keep that for landslide hazard areas and other geological hazard areas, to keep that professional on record involved through the development of, of that proposal. So we're expecting to meet again to discuss the gap analysis and proposed code changes. That does conclude my presentation. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions, Mel?
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Caroline Eckle with Rediscover Downtown Plan Update.
Good evening, council. Normally, you would see me doing this presentation. I'm really excited to announce that we have a new principal planner, Caroline Eckle. She filled the vacancy that was from Kayleen Nobus's departure. So we are now fully staffed in long-range planning, and Caroline came on board in June and has just taken, taken it, this project and run with it really well. So I'm gonna turn it over to her, but I wanted to give you a welcome, Caroline, and we're so excited you're here.
Thank you. Thank you. Today, I have the pleasure of updating you on some of the work that we've been doing on our downtown plan. This plan really grew out of the comprehensive planning efforts. And so it started last winter. We've been working diligently through the spring and summer. I'll share with you some of the things that we've been doing, and we're on track to hopefully adopt this plan by, before the end of the year. This will allow us to be recertified by the Puget Sound Regional Council as a regional growth center. So it helps us receive grants and other things for the downtown, which will be very helpful for implementation. So to walk you through just a few highlights for what we've been working on over the summer, we'll talk a little bit about some of the community engagement efforts that we've been working on, and also a little glimpse into some of the economic conditions that are shaping development in the downtown area. So, so first, some of our community engagement efforts. We had the opportunity to do a really unique community survey with this project. It was a virtual walking tour of the downtown where residents could select, or community members of any kind could select one of three different paths to walk through the downtown. And they were able to see video of those locations along the walk and share with us their feedback, choose from some different precedent images and other ideas that they might have for improving those areas throughout the downtown. The survey was open for seven weeks. We had 307 respondents. We were able to offer this in six different languages, and we promoted it throughout the city, including at some of our community events, like the International Festival and Cornucopia Days. Just to give you a very small glimpse at some of what we heard, we did hear that there are frustrations with some of the lane and road reductions through the city. We also did hear that the pedestrian experience in the downtown, some people feel unsafe crossing different roadways in the downtown, that they're very busy. So there were concerns regarding that. Crime, drug use, and physical safety generally were brought up. And people want more to do downtown. They're excited about having the downtown here. They wanna see it thrive and become sort of a cul, a cultural and economic hub for the city. So some of the opportunities that were discussed by residents or respondents in the survey, they are interested in seeing more active ground floor spaces. So when you're walking around downtown, they wanna feel like there's activity. Local, local businesses are thriving. They would like to see better use of parks and open spaces in the downtown. They're interested in having programming and events or activities in those spaces. Sinage, wayfinding, and lighting were, were discussed as ways that we could enhance the downtown and help people find their way to different businesses and parks and activities throughout the area. And then talking about art or other efforts that we could utilize in order to create a more fun or memorable experience for those visiting the downtown, specifically, you know, connecting to like the inter-urban trail and capitalizing on people who are traveling through our downtown but may not currently be stopping. We also were able to initiate and form our community advisory group. Councilmember Fincher attended our first meeting on July 23rd. We had one on August 13th as well, and our final one will be on September 10th. To give you a little glimpse of some of the things that we've heard from them, a lot of these things echo what we saw in the survey. Some of the frustrations were crime, drug use, and physical safety in the downtown, and some of the impacts that that has on both businesses and people who are wanting to travel through the downtown and access those businesses and parks and other spaces. Vacancy or visual perceptions of the downtown that it's vacant. How can we create a more active feeling along our roadways? That it's challenging to walk or bike downtown, and people want more to do. They're really interested in experiences and events and activities that reflect the diversity and the culture of the city. And then opportunities that we found were more businesses and support for local businesses. Sinage, wayfinding, and lighting could be enhanced, so people know what's here and know how to find it. Better use of parks and open spaces, again, increasing programming and creating public spaces where people can gather, places where kids can play, families can come. Art and cultural experiences that can bring people downtown and encourage people to walk, to connect Kent Station to some of our more historic areas of the downtown and allow people to experience everything downtown has to offer. And then improve connections to our parks and trails. We have a number of parks in the downtown, and people wanna be able to safely feel like they can travel to and from those, those spaces readily. We also have started to take a look, a closer look at some of the economic conditions that impact the kinds of development that we could expect to see in the downtown. This is very preliminary, and so I wanna share that with you. Our, our economic team, our economic development team in our department has started utilizing certain data sources that we can begin to understand what kinds of traffic and trips are generated in the downtown. We do wanna note that there are certain types of data that we're not able to, to see or access, and so certain types of data are private. So it's not a perfect data set, but it gives us a pretty good idea of where people are going and how we might be able to enhance or build on what's there. So first, we're looking at some of the shopping centers in the area. These are some of the major hubs where people are frequenting. So Kent Station, Langston Landing, and Meeker Square. We took a look at some of the transportation volumes that are happening on each of the roadways, the major roadways that are coming through the downtown area, and also the Sounder Station, to sort of see which roadways, we have a lot of people traveling through the downtown for various purposes. How can we capture some of that traffic and create more foot traffic for our businesses? So just as an example, one of the data sets we're looking at were specifically grocery and food items, and which ones are being more regularly frequented? How can we draw more traffic in for the businesses that are there and highlight those unique or specialty businesses that exist? Here's some leisure, so the, the AMC, the Showware Center, some of our other parks even. Where are people going? And within the historic downtown as well, looking at which businesses are being traveled to and visited more regularly. And again, our, our main goal is to discover how can we bring some of those cars into the downtown? People who are traveling through the city on the Sounder, people who might want to access downtown by foot or by bike or on the inter-urban trail? How can we pull people in and bring them into these spaces in the downtown? So coming up next, we are moving heavily into plan development. It's moving pretty quickly. We've got a lot of information now from the community, and so we're moving forward to write each of the sections of the plan. This will be reviewed by the Puget Sound Regional Council, so that we can be certified. And again, we're hoping to bring it back to you by November. That is our goal, so that we can move forward with that certification process. So again, we've got another advisory group meeting. We also are moving into a series of staff conversations, which are really important for us to know, you know, how, how can these ideas that we've come up with be implemented? What's the feasibility of these ideas? What kinds of phasing could we look at? And then we will anticipate a Landy's and Planning Board hearing in October and hoping to bring this to you in November. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Caroline?
I'll do my very best to answer.
All right. Did you, I have a comment about the data. I think it's very interesting if we can really, I guess, dig into it, because it seems like there's a lot of traffic going to Kearsom Park and AutoTech. And, and I'm just like, it's very intriguing to see, and if we can get it more, you know, like, really look at it for a bit longer and seize it. Is this how people really are in downtown Kent engaging, so?
I know, this is very preliminary data. Our, our economic team, our economic development team, Bill and Dan, have really pulled this together. It's very interesting. There are some surprising pieces of it that give us a glimpse at what we might be looking for and give us a direction to go to research more, to figure out what, what is really happening downtown? Where are people really going? But it's not a perfect data set, and we're, we're just now looking at it. And so do you wanna sort of give that as a caveat there?
Tonight was a preview, so that you got to meet Caroline and hear where we're going. September 10th, the, or, I'm sorry, September 16th at the council workshop. We have a longer time. So this was just a quick preview to get your brain started, and then we'll come back with more information on it.
Thank you.
I believe it's the 16th. I can confirm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Okay, we have Public Works. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Council President. We're going to hear from Eric Preston about a resolution adopting the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan for facilities in the public right-of-way.
Yes, good afternoon, Eric Preston. So you might remember, we talked about the ADA Transition Plan back on April 1st. Not a, not a fool's joke, don't worry. So, but today, I'll be presenting a resolution for your consideration. So hopefully, I'll answer the questions of why do we need an ADA Transition Plan? What is it? What is in it? And what are some future considerations for Kent? So the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, was signed into law back in 1990 and went into effect in 1992. So ever since then, the law has required that each qualifying jurisdiction with 50 or more employees create a transition plan. So this requirement has been in place for decades. So it is time to update it. It's the right thing to do, and it will be required by WashDOT and other funding agencies to be eligible to receive transportation grant funds. The plan focuses on Title II in the public right-of-way, things like sidewalks, curb ramps, signals, and pedestrian crossings. That I'll detail later. The plan does not focus, or does not cover city facilities outside of the right-of-way that fall under Title III. So what is the ADA Transition Plan? The ADA names four required elements on the left side of your screen there. The first is identify obstacles that limit accessibility. And so we basically do this by conducting an inventory and then analyzing each of those elements for compliance. Number two, we describe how the facilities will be made accessible. In other words, non-compliant ramps and driveway approaches will be rebuilt. Push buttons will be moved or replaced. Number three, we specify a schedule to compliance, including interim steps. Chapter six of the plan goes into great detail on this, and I'll cover that some more later, both for inventory and for construction. Number four, we indicate the city official responsible for implementation. This was actually helped out by Resolution 2089 back, that was passed in June. Names the ADA Coordinator as a city attorney. Other information on the right side of your screen, that most ADA Transition Plans include public notice, comment period, grievance procedures, internal standards and specifications, and a process to monitor progress. So in our plan, we have a self-evaluation, which details what information the city will collect during the inventory, like the dimensions, slopes, and other details of curb ramps, sidewalks, driveway approaches, as well as signalized and enhanced pedestrian crossings. It also includes a discussion on ADA policies and practices the city currently has in place, city planning documents like the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, city code, policies, and resolutions that reference ADA, and engineering standards that we have as a city, as well as state and national standards that we are bound to follow. The plan also reviews practices and procedures, like our grievance procedure, our request for accommodation, different interim accommodations, and the designation of an ADA Coordinator. The project development and execution is also reviewed, basically how we plan to develop and fund projects, and special challenges that we have here in Kent. Our implementation schedule has two parts, the inventory and the correction or construction phase. So our plan is to complete the inventory for curb ramps, push buttons, and signals in the next three years, driveway crossings in five years, and all sidewalks within 10 to 15 years. You know, you'll notice there's a window there. That's a lot of work. During the correction phase, we hope to correct signal timing and function within the next three years, push button function in five to 10 years, and location in 10 to 20. Driveway crossings, like you see on the right of your screen, in the next 15 to 25 years. But curb ramps and sidewalks, we do not have enough information to estimate a timeline right now. So that is indeterminate in the plan. right now, so that is indeterminate in the plan. Then we'll monitor progress using our own tracking system and updating the plan periodically. Some future items for future consideration, with so much work to do, there'll be lots of work available for summer interns, especially during this inventory stage. City also should consider how to fund ADA projects. Our existing overlay program, we do a lot of ramp replacement every year, and occasionally we move push buttons around when we go through a crosswalk. We need to continue to look for ADA-specific grant opportunities, but large-scale ADA work will need to be programmed. So what have we done since April? The draft plan is still on the engage.kentwa.gov website, along with a simple two-question survey with translation available. We did present to three boards and commissions, including the Land Use and Planning Board, Race Equity Diversity Inclusion and Belonging Board, and the Bicycle Advisory Board. We reached out directly to many advocacy groups and community organizations and received, you know, we're able to connect substantially with six of them, the Senior Center, Chamber of Commerce of the School District, ADA Coordinator, YMCA Open Doors for Multicultural Families, and South King County Mobility Coalition. And do have some public comments. We had five comment responses from the public. Three had substantive sentences. I want to share some selections from each of them. You can see there on your screen. "I've seen the challenges created by communities in spaces where accessibility is not considered. I love seeing our city taking this into consideration." And another one, "As Kent moves forward with the plan, please continue to involve the community," which is a common theme you'll see in the next one as well. "I appreciate the city's commitment to evaluating and upgrading facilities, public rights-of-way, and programs to meet ADA standards. It's essential that the plan continues to prioritize community input, especially from individuals with lived experience of disability and their families." So now, our final step is a resolution for your consideration, so please do consider it to adopt. Available for questions.
Anyone have any questions? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick question, Eric. A reminder that, so this is just a plan. It is coming up with an inventory, seeing where we have things in place where we need to make improvements. It is not saying we are going to actually make those improvements.
No.
It's just the plan. So I just want to.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, be clear that it's not saying we're actually going to do these things. We have a process in place. It means that we'll have a plan, then we can prioritize and look at making fixes.
Yeah, once we complete that inventory.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Anyone else? I move to adopt Resolution Number 2094, adopting the City of Kent's Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan for Facilities in the Public Right-of-Way.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and thank you very much. Next, we're going to hear from Evan Swanson, we haven't heard from in a while. This is going to be joint funding agreement with the U.S. Department of Interior for Water Resource Investigations.
Yeah, thanks for remembering me. I think it has been about a year since I've been up here. But anyway, my name is Evan Swanson. I'm a Conservation Coordinator in the Environmental Engineering Division of the Public Works Department, and I'm here today to present on a joint funding agreement that we have with the USGS, the U.S. Geological Survey. This is an annual renewal that we've had ongoing now for about 30 years, and the renewal is for fiscal year 2026, which begins on October 1st. Throughout the presentation, I'll go over the monitoring locations, the gauges, the data that they gather, and then what the city and city staff utilizes the data for. So the first location we have is at Rock Creek in Ravensdale. This location is just downstream from the City of Kent's main water supply source, which is Clark Springs. And one aspect of this 50-year agreement that we have with the federal services, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and National Marine Fisheries Service, is to perform augmentation of Rock Creek during times of the year where salmon may be spawning upstream. And this gauge, which not only monitors creek flow, but also precipitation, allows us to know exactly how much to augment to meet those obligations of the agreement. One other thing to note is that we're currently in year 14 of that 50-year agreement, so we have about 36 years remaining on the agreement with the federal services. The next set of gauges are in Mill Creek and Springbrook Creek. These ones are vitally important and also data that we use on a daily basis in engineering and operations, so we know exactly how to manage the flows in Mill Creek. These are related directly to the Upper Mill Creek Dam, which has gates that we can operate to release flows or hold back flows based on how much precipitation and input and influence there is into Mill Creek. So having a location at the downstream end and then at the upstream end, the downstream end would be north, and then the upstream end of the creek would be south. So, and then the location at Springbrook Creek allows us to analyze the flows that are going into the downstream end of Mill Creek as well. The next set of gauges are within the Green River and starting at the downstream end, at south of the city there, the South 277th Street Bridge, and then we have one in the middle at Meeker Street Bridge, and then the South 200th Street Bridge, 200th Street Bridge, there is a gauge there as well. The South 200th Street Bridge is partially funded by the City of Tuck Willa because they also utilize that gauge. All of these gauges primarily are used when we're looking at high-flow events, but also low-flow events. And then it is important to note that there is a gauge in Auburn, which is primarily funded or solely funded by King County, and that is the gauge that the Army Corps of Engineers uses for the operation of the Howard Hansen Dam. And then this is an example of the flows at the Meeker Street Bridge, and you can see it's been, it's been a bit of a mild year to this point, and I think we can all think back the last few months, it's been pretty dry. But at the peak of flows, we were seeing flows in the Green River at 5,000 CFS, and now we're seeing them well below 500 CFS. So these, this real-time data that we have available on our computer screens is very useful and very helpful for all city staff in knowing how to monitor our, knowing how to operate our systems. And then the last slide is just overview of funding. The City of Kent's portion per this agreement is 131,690, which is about a 3% increase or $4,000 increase from the 2025 agreement, really just keeping up with inflation. And that's all I have for you today. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Evan. Any questions?
I need to authorize Eric to sign the joint funding agreement for Water Resource Investigations with the U.S. Department of Interior. Set final terms and conditions, except for the Public Works Director and signature.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, it cares. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, we're going to have a special introduction of our next guest.
Good evening, Council President. Councilmembers, David Payne, City's Transportation Planner, I'm here to introduce the staff from King County Metro, who's going to give us a briefing on the South Link Connections Phase III. The team's been doing outreach over the last year and a half or so, planning for what will come with the implementation of Link Light Rail and how we can re-envision some of the services, the transit services, to take advantage of that investment. So first, I'm going to introduce Amanda Pleasant Brown. She is the Government Relations Lead for King County Metro. And then, if I could ask Amanda to introduce Nicole and Christina also from the team, too.
Absolutely. Thanks, Ava. Good evening, councilmembers. It's lovely to be here with you tonight. It was great, actually, hearing the other presentations, too. Very helpful to understand where people are going in Kent. So yes, Amanda Pleasant Brown, she, they, I do Government Relations. We're here to talk about the bus restructure around the upcoming Federal Way Link extension. And so we do have a longer presentation that we wanted to provide you with just the context. So you'll see a lot of slides that we're not going to stop on tonight, but you're welcome to ask questions. We want to be mindful of time. I'm going to hand it over to my colleagues to also introduce themselves, and we'll get kicked off. Christina, do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. Christina Gonzalez. I'm a Senior Community Engagement Planner, and I'll talk briefly about our community engagement broadly and in Kent.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Aguirre. I'm a Transportation Planner at King County Metro and also the Project Manager for the South Link Connections Mobility Project. I will go ahead and get us started. The first couple of slides are background, so I will just kind of breeze over those. This is some information about our project scope, which routes are included, as well as which jurisdictions we're working with. This is a reminder of the mobility priorities that we're really focusing our proposals on, that were informed by community engagement and prioritized by our community advisory boards. As a reminder of our timeline, we were last here over the summer to share our initial proposals. We've taken some time to gather some feedback, and we're here to share the revised proposals. Our Phase III engagement goes through the end of this month, so we're coming to you all to share information, as well as being out in community. And we are hoping to finalize our plan and submit it to the King County Council in spring of next year, and we'll start implementing our project as early as fall 2026.
All right. So on the screen, you can see the engagement broadly, and we were out in community in multiple places, but we will go to the next slide. Okay, so specifically in Kent, we sent multilingual text and email alerts to riders. Kent riders would be using Routes 162, 164, 183, and 193. We placed rider alerts at 16 local bus stops. We had nine Mobility Board members that either lived, worked, or traveled heavily through Kent that were giving us direct feedback. We were flyering in multiple locations, you can see there. We were tabling at different places, including Winterfest and the Kent Library. We had street teams, so we were out in pairs, talking to people at different locations. So that included our Kent Des Moines Parking Ride, the Kent Station Shopping Mall, and other bus stops that you see there. We held culturally specific outreach, and so we are working with a few organizations directly that they were providing outreach on behalf of King County Metro. And here, the International Rescue Committee and Utopia Washington were supporting our engagement efforts. And we did presentations as well to the Kent Bicycle Advisory Board, Kent Outpost Cast, the Kent City Council.
Thanks, Christina. So to dial a little bit more into exactly what we heard, this has some general information about how folks felt about the Phase II network as a whole. I will say that compared to most of our mobility projects, the approval ratings were pretty high, with 70% of people saying that they felt either positively or neutrally about the proposed changes. And we also got some relatively high scores for how folks were feeling that the network was advancing those five prioritized needs. Digging a little bit deeper into the route level, you can see on this chart, the routes that serve Kent have a green box around them. Generally, the routes that had the highest levels of satisfaction were routes with frequent service or routes where we were proposing new days of service where they currently don't exist. So that really showed us where we should continue to invest in the next iteration of the proposal. Proposals that were a little bit less popular were peak-only routes and the metro flex zones, some of which points to the need for additional education, particularly around metro flex. So this type of information, again, shows us where we should continue to lean into in terms of what proposals are successful and where we need to make adjustments. This next slide has a lot of information about the highlights of the Phase III network, which uses resources from removed peak-only routes to enhance the all-day, all-week travel in accordance with those prioritized mobility needs. On this slide, we have a long list of the different ways that we're doing that, but I do want to call attention to the map on the right. It assigns a color to different routes based on the number of improvements that are placed upon that route in our Phase III network. So blue is the highest with four improvements, and then light blue, and then yellow, or orange, sorry. Looking specifically about what was changed between Phase II and Phase III based on engagement, our updated proposal includes 77 more trips throughout the week, an adjustment of the proposed metro flex hours, and the removal of duplicate route, peak-only Route 162, which I will talk about more in depth in a few slides. We also want to address things that we did not respond to in our Phase III network at this time, including the desire to retain peak-period bus service between the project area and downtown Seattle, and the desire for additional increased coverage. When working with a cost-neutral budget, we know that difficult trade-offs have to be made, and our proposal aims to best leverage Link Light Rail to connect to downtown Seattle and to implement changes that best align with those prioritized mobility needs. Moving specifically into the impacts to Kent, this slide kind of shows at a high level what the proposed impacts are to Kent. So there's a good number of routes that serve Kent that are not part of our project scope, and so they don't have any changes proposed on them. We are proposing to remove peak-only Routes 157 and 162. We have a proposal to revise Route 193 by retaining all of its stops, but removing two trips, one in the morning and one in the evening. We are proposing to improve Route 183 with new Sunday service and create a new frequent route, Route 164. Over the next couple of slides, I'll be talking about each of these routes in detail, focusing specifically on changes between Phase II and Phase III for the sake of time. But before we get into that, I do want to discuss the Route 162 proposal, because that is a new change in our network. We are proposing this after considering many factors, which you can see on your slides here, the first being equity. So at the time of Route 162's creation, Sounder did not accept an income-based reduced fare option, and so we felt it was important for folks who use Orca Lift to have an option for their commutes in. And that barrier is now removed, with Sounder now accepting Orca Lift, and we wanted to use those routes' resources to reinvest into that all-day, all-week service that benefits more riders. In terms of what we heard in engagement, we know that the peak-only service meets fewer of the prioritized mobility needs that we're focusing on, and during engagement, we received feedback really wanting investment in services that better align with those needs, especially that off-peak travel, the weekend travel, earlier and later service. We also brought this proposal to the Mobility Board for their feedback and their buy-in and received their approval on this proposal. In terms of network design, I will share that all of the routes that are currently served by Route 162 are served by other transit options. We also did a detailed travel time analysis, because we know that that's one of the first things that customers feel. Is my trip going to take longer with this change? And which showed that Route 162 is actually not travel time competitive for most of the commute hours compared to the transit alternatives that folks would take. It's also important to know that services like Sounder and Link Light Rail are also more reliable because they aren't susceptible to freeway traffic, and we also know that freeway traffic is only going to get worse over the coming years with WashDOT's Revive I-5 project.
You say, what do you say, time competitive? What term do you use it again now?
Yes, yes. So we wanted to really make sure that if we were asking folks to use different modes of travel, would it take longer for them to use other transit routes? And what we found was that the 162 was faster than other routes, only in the very top of the morning peak, when there isn't any freeway traffic. When we actually modeled what it would look like to take other routes compared to Route 162 throughout the peak of the peak, we found that it was, the alternatives were between three and 26 minutes faster, and a lot of that is attributed to the freeway traffic.
This might be a dumb question. Could you back up one slide, please?
Absolutely.
Well, 162, that's by Lake Meridian, right?
Yes.
So you're saying the Sounder is a better option for them, right?
So what is actually not shown on this map, and apologies for that, is local Route 168, which. 168, which serves the same stops that the 162 does over on the Kent East Hill. So by modeling folks taking the 168 to Sounder at Kent Station into downtown Seattle, we found that that was faster than taking the 162.
So just one follow-up.
Where's 168 on that image?
It's not on here. Apologies for that. But it's, it follows the same dashed portion of the 162 on the Kent East Hill towards Kent Station.
So they get, I'm sorry, so they get on 168 versus 162 to go to the Sounder? And is the time for the 168, that similar to what 162 used to be, or is it different?
Well, the 168 would run more often than the 162.
Okay.
And we do recognize that it's not ideal to have people transfer, but when we really focused on, would it take them longer to make the same trips even with a transfer? The answer was no for most of the day.
Let me answer my question. Thank you.
I know staff has looked at this. We've talked about it at the Regional Transit Committee. Because this route is used frequently by Kent bus riders. Yeah, I was like, 20, I think it's like 20 to even tie 30,000 people on average. We said we got feedback from, I'm so sorry, you got feedback from those riders or people that were using that route frequently? What specifically did you have from Kent? Because I think when you look at council member voices question, if people are having to have, you know, they're used to getting to their job or wherever they're going one way, now they have to have multiple stops on this, and sometimes it might take more time, sometimes it might be faster. Do you have any specific Kent feedback where you felt this was the appropriate route to remove?
Yeah. We really wanted to hear from folks who are taking transit in Kent on all of the routes that serve Kent that are within our project scope. And what we really heard is that people wanted to, they liked what we did in our Phase Two proposal, but they wanted more in terms of the local service. They wanted more weekend service, they wanted more late-night and early service. And one of our mobility priorities is making sure that folks are able to travel quickly throughout the project area and beyond. And so really using that feedback, and that was feedback that we did see consistently with citizens of Kent, that really helped shape this proposal.
One follow-up question, if you don't mind. Are we letting those riders know now what these changes are going to be? Because we're talking about quite a few people that frequent that route.
Yeah.
So how are we letting those people know that this is really what's happening?
Yes. We, because we know that this is a big change, we really wanted to make sure to do dedicated outreach to Route 162 riders. So we're doing the same email and text alerts to everybody who rides that route, who has signed up for them. We're also covering most, if not, I would say the large majority of the 162 stops should have a rider alert posted to let folks know that changes are coming to this route, and to go onto the website for more information and to provide feedback.
Christina, is there anything that you would add about that?
Besides our ask of all of you that we will give to also please continue to share the information, this is where, y'all know the community the best, and we would love to hear your support in accessing and getting more Kent residents to give feedback. Thank you.
Y'all saw an armor, that was a question.
Yeah. Okay. So question. So it sounds like some of these maps are not showing all the routes that are available. So my question is, first, are you aware that Kent goes well beyond 240th to the north?
Yes.
And how would you suggest somebody who lives at, say, 219th, get to Sounder or to Light Rail?
Yes. So this map just shows the routes that are within our project scope. We certainly should have replaced this with something that shows the larger picture. That area specifically is covered by our Kent metro flex zone, which would provide connections to Kent Station, where they can connect to other transit services, so really feeding people into that transit hub.
You understand that we have a lot of seniors and immigrant communities that are not going to use an app-based system? So you're saying there is no option but an app-based system if you're at, like, 219th and you want to get to Sounder?
That is what is currently available. And we know that there are certainly barriers to using this type of service. I think that we are trying to do what we can to do really dedicated educational effort.
Yeah. And with the metro flex app-based service too, yes, it is app-based, but we also have a call-in function. We have translation services as well. So we're happy to do additional education so that everyone can have access to this. Seniors can call a number, they can do things like schedule a ride. Folks with disabilities can mark that in the app so that they don't have to, you know, go through any ride filtering. We do account for some accessibility issues. We're always happy to take some more feedback.
And you're aware too that we are the third-largest city in King County?
Absolutely aware.
And do you think that this service is adequate for the third-largest city in King County?
So my role in metros is work with 39 jurisdictions, and I can tell you that the consistent complaint that I get from every jurisdiction is that there isn't enough, and people want more. And so we absolutely hear that. We understand that people want more service. We absolutely understand that people want more transit and mobility services. If we had, you know, resources without a high mark, if we had a way to invest and put in even more resources than we have, then we would happily do that.
I just, I see big blank areas in the Kent map, and yet I see East Hill and other communities packed with routes.
Absolutely. No, absolutely. So first and foremost, we'll send a better map so that we can really talk about, you know, what's missing, because there are routes missing on here. And we hear you. We hear that you want more.
Like you do, but.
I understand that. Yeah. And I am sorry to hear that, but we do.
Councilwoman McChutner.
Thank you, Council President. I know we have more of this presentation to get through. I want to thank you first off for being here. I know that, you know, some of these questions are very difficult, but we have this conversation at the RTC all the time. It's not just Kent asking for more routes, it is cities all across our region. And it's just that there's not the funding available. So while we feel like maybe our needs aren't being met, there are other cities that are having the same discussion. It's not just the city of Kent.
Councilwoman Francher.
And Metro's having this conversation too with our finances and resources as well. We need to, we need to get some more resources in our system. You know this better than anyone. Yeah, absolutely. Do you want us to continue? I know that we're about at time.
You have about five more minutes, but.
Minutes?
Yeah, and I can appreciate, you know, that the other cities are, but we talked about equity earlier, and that's a big part when we have large swaths of people who do not have another way to be able to get around. And so it is important, but I will wait to look at the other copies of the map, or the other routes that we don't see today.
And I want to echo that as well. I appreciate you being here, and I know you hear from other cities, but Kent is different. We're the most diverse city in the state, right? So we have populations from all over the world who necessarily don't speak the language. And so I think it would be beneficial if you can have the metro flex, you know, translated, providing some videos, tabling at locations where other cultures and other individuals in our community are, because it's important. They don't understand, you know, that they have access to this. And, you know, language is a barrier, income is a barrier, and they don't always know that they have access and resources. So we would appreciate if you can do a bit, take this feedback and, you know, provide more resources and more education here in our city. There's definitely a need. And I think I'm going to take it back, send it back to you.
No, that was just it, because some people came from areas, not only where, you know, different languages, but where there was no bus services. And people in this country, I mean, where I was born, there's not a bus service. So it's important to be able to let people know in the multiple languages and in multiple methods, how to be able to use the service that the services are available, because that for many people is going to be their livelihood, whether it's getting to school, whether it's getting to work, whether it's just getting to the doctor, or, you know, to a park for recreation.
Grocery store. All right, you can continue. Thank you.
Thank you. So I went over this slide, and we'll move into each specific route just for the sake of time. I'll only talk about what has changed between Phase Two and Phase Three. So for our Phase Two proposal, Route 193, as I mentioned earlier, we are proposing to remove 1 a.m. and 1 p.m. peak that have lower ridership. We're talking about seven people using that trip, and they're pretty closely spaced to other trips. And so we wanted to move those resources around. As part of the Phase Three network, we are maintaining the service at Star Lake and Kent Des Moines Parking Ride, which we had previously proposed to no longer serve with this route. For the Route 183 in our Phase Two proposal, we added Sunday service. There currently isn't any Sunday service on this route, and we received really good feedback on that particular proposal. So in Phase Three, we aren't proposing any further changes to this, and we'll continue to propose that new Sunday service. Route 164 partially replaces the current Route 165 between Kent Des Moines Station, Kent Station, and Green River College. This was highlighted, again, as one of those more popular proposals, because in the Phase Two network, we had proposed service comes every 15 minutes throughout the day on weekdays. And we heard the need to continue to invest in this route. And so part of our proposal in the Phase Three network is to also have 15-minute service throughout the day on weekends. With that, I will turn it to Christina to talk about our Phase Three engagement.
Yeah, and so briefly, we definitely want to hear from all of your residents. The website is the same, our survey is even shorter, and folks can specifically give us feedback on the proposed changes, anything else. Our materials continue to be available in 15 languages. And part of the metro flex conversation is we're definitely hearing that there's a need for education just broadly. And we are working with our, with our community engagement team that comes in after this process. And one of the things that we're really sharing with them is that we need much more awareness about our metro flex services as well. And I think then with the next slide, oh, yes, we have a virtual information session tomorrow, so definitely if you could share that. The next slide. And we shared before, although we're outreaching to over 200 organizations, we've specifically partnered with organizations to give, to do outreach and collect feedback on our behalf. So for this phase, we're working with African Careers and African Young Dreamers Empowerment Program International as well to help us to continue our culturally relevant engagement.
Yes, and we really appreciate the engagement from your staff. David Payne has been excellent. Rob Brown and his team have been excellent. So we would really like your help in spreading the word. We already sent the toolkit to your staff, so we'd love your help in spreading out more so that we can get more engagement from folks. Please share it. And then we continue to have partner review board meetings, and so please, you know, allow them to keep coming. And then we are here for your additional concerns. And so these conversations do stick with us, so we'll continue to come back and keep talking.
So I'm assuming, Rob, you'll get that map for us, please?
Gotcha.
With all the bus stops?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are adjourned until 5:15 for our council workshop. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, August 19. We have one item on our agenda, and that's our water system update. We have Paul Johnson and Ian Beckstrom here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council president and council members. Thank you for your time today. I am Paul Johnson. I'm Water Distribution and Sewer Collections Manager. This is Ian Beckstrom. He's Water Quality Utility Site and Process Control Manager. Every year at this time, we provide you with an update on what's going on with the water system. Today, Ian Beckstrom and myself will touch up on our water supply and water quality and the distribution sections of our department. We would like to share the challenges we face, projects we have completed this year, and projects that we're working on currently. So Ian, we'll start you and fill in with this section.
All right. Good afternoon, council president and council members. I'd like to start the presentation by taking a look at this year's water system demand. If you take a look at the red line there, you get a sense of where we're at for the year. Since January 1, we've tended to be on the higher side of our five-year, five-year max. We would expect this to continue on at least through the end of December, or no, sorry, September, and then bring that down back towards the average, probably mid-October as temperatures start to cool off. We've reached nearly a high of 12 million gallons a day demand. Again, been warmer and drier than years past, so not really any surprise to us in water. Taking a look at the Washington drought declaration advisory. On June 5, the Department of Ecology issued a drought emergency declaration for 19 watersheds in Washington State, which includes portions of King, Pierce and Snohomish Counties with no anticipated impacts to areas served by the utilities of Tacoma, Seattle and Everett. The city of Kent's water supplies remain healthy as we had enough fall and winter rain to recharge our ground systems, our ground sources, as well as source management, good source management from our operations crew. We don't anticipate having any issues continuing to run our system as normal through the rest of the year. Since October 21st, '24, we've seen about 72% of median precipitation. In our Tacoma-Green River Supply Snow Pack was about 50, 55% of normal this year.
Quick question, Ian. Sorry. So the drought advisory, is that for the residents or is that just for agencies? Yeah, but I don't, why I'm asking is because I haven't, I haven't heard of it. So curious.
The state as a whole, I mean mostly would impact us municipalities or water providers through the state.
Okay.
Like I said, we, we haven't seen any vast differences in our water sources, so it really hasn't impacted the citizens of Kent.
Thank you.
We began taking our municipal storage behind the Howard Hansen Dam on June 6, when the minimum river flows were reached in the Green River, on the Green River at the Palmer Gage near the Tacoma Filtration Facility. Looking at the water supply indicator provided by Tacoma, we still, given the dry temperatures and high heat, we're still in the adequate level. Talking to Tacoma, they don't anticipate any issues or water shortages this summer. Tacoma Regional Water Supply System, a quick update on that. The Howard Hansen Dam Additional Water Storage and Fish Passage Project are continuing forward with their design phase, with construction expected to be completed in 2030. Right now, construction work is underway on the chemical feed line replacement project at the Green River Filtration Facility. The existing lines were past their useful life, and Tacoma is replacing the system in its entirety. Contractors will be working to complete this project by October of this year, and every indication shows that they are on schedule for that. Water Quality Report. Everyone should have been handed this year's water quality report. It was completed in June and made available to customers on July 1. Postcard was delivered to all of our customers informing them of the report, providing them a link to view it online. And a printed report can also be made available to any customer who requests it. The report provides customers with information on where our water comes from, how it's treated, what steps the city is taking to ensure we are providing safe, clean drinking water, and provides them the results of thousands of water samples taken in the past year. We also use the report to touch on water use efficiency goals, water conservation, cross-connection control, and keep customers updated on accomplishments we have made in the past year, as well as projects that are coming up in the future. Water Treatment and Water Quality Monitoring. Our water quality team has been busy this past year making various upgrades and improvements throughout the water system to chemical feed equipment, chemical monitoring equipment, and providing various samples to the DOH to ensure that we are complying and providing the safest drinking water possible. PFAS. Water Quality continues to test quarterly for PFAS as required by the DOH at all of our source sites. Out of all of Kent's seven sources, we've only, only two, Kent Springs and East Hill Well, have any, have had any detectable PFAS results, both of which have tested well below the state action limit. The water quality team regularly tests those sites beyond that, beyond what is required by state and federal agencies to ensure we are providing the safest and cleanest water In addition, the city of Kent has begun collecting UCMR-5 samples. It stands for Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Regulation Fifth Cycle, which tests for an additional 30 chemical contaminants. There's information on that as well inside the water quality report in case anyone is looking for anything additional. We also show all of our PFAS samples that have been taken over the year inside that report as well. 212 Water Treatment Plant Upgrades. 212 Treatment Plant was brought online in the early 90s and has a water rate of 2,700 gallons per minute, 1,400 acre feet a year. For those that don't know what that is, it's roughly 456 million gallons a year that we can take through that site, making it the fourth highest yielding site the, the city has. In 2003, we began upgrading the site's aging and failing equipment. In the past year, we have completed several upgrades. The installation of new potassium permanganate, KMNO4 tanks and pumps that's used for the removal of iron, manganese and hydrogen sulfide. Installation of new chlorine, pH fluoride, antibitidy analyzers, as well as finishing the replacement of the filter media inside Filter 2. We are continuing to work on the replacement of the air-operated valves as well as the air compressor at the site. All work has been completed by a combination of in-house and contractor services, and we expect all planned work to be completed by the end of '25. SCADA. The SCADA system has gone through some big changes in the past year. Our SCADA team has been working with integrators to move all control logic from our Wonderware program located at the Public Work and Operation Building to the individual sites. What this means is that the sites will be able to control themselves rather than being given direction from a central hub. The intention is to make the SCADA system far less vulnerable in the event that we were to ever lose our Windows-based SCADA servers. They can continue to run as they're supposed to. SCADA has also been working a lot with our other water groups on improvements to the instrumentation at the 212 Water Treatment Facility, as well as standardizing equipment at our other remote sites in a push to prioritize efficiency and cut down on the maintenance time and troubleshooting time. Finally, in July, SCADA was able to complete their biannual UPS battery replacement. Every two years, we replace all UPS batteries or make any necessary upgrades to UPSs throughout the system to ensure that we can maintain power to the PLCs and radios in the event of a power outage. And then PLC upgrades. In July, we, we finished the replacement of the Guyverston Reservoir PLC replacement as part of an ongoing push to replace older Siemens 300-level PLCs with new Siemens 1200 and 1500 PLCs. The SCADA group is currently working towards the replacement of the PLC at Pump Station 5 with an estimated completion of March 2026. SCADA group has also been working hard with IT, putting together a plan for the move to Keyhawk. An additional master PLC was purchased and programmed for Keyhawk that can be installed prior to their move-in date in order to achieve a more seamless transition while also creating more redundancy after the move-in. 6 Million Gallon Tube Reservoir. In February, the 6 Million Gallon Tube Reservoir was taken offline as part of the 218th Improvement Project. Our city staff took this opportunity to clean the interior of the reservoir as well as have, have it inspected by Gray and Osborne Consulting Engineers. While the tank was offline, we also made some needed improvements, working alongside GC Systems. The source and supply staff cleaned and made necessary repairs to the 12-inch altitude valve on the inlet of the tank, as well as replacing the 18-inch gate valve on the outlet of the tank. On 218, where Garrison Park is, yeah, underneath the, underneath the tennis courts. Yeah, so basically what you're looking at, the big picture on the left is inside the reservoir after it's been emptied and cleaned. The upper right is going to be your 18-inch gate valve, which comes out, which is the water leaving the tank. And then that bottom right is the altitude valve, which allows water into the tank. Yeah, it's pretty fun being in there. It's big. Finally, Cambridge Altitude Valve Replacement. In May, after assessing the condition of the altitude valve that feeds water into Cambridge Tank, we determined it would be in the city's best interest to replace it rather than make any necessary repairs. All work was performed and completed by city staff to install a new vault, 8-inch altitude valve and 12-inch valves outside of the vault, both on the inlet and outlet sides. And now I will turn it over to Paul.
All right. Good job, Ian. As I mentioned last year, with the lead and copper rule, the Department of Health issued a revised lead and copper rule. The rule required all water systems to complete a service line inventory of various types of pipe. All water services on both public and private portions of the service line. Last year, when I gave this presentation, we were about 75% complete with that. Staff worked hard, both went, or both data research and field verification crews had to excavate and select service, or all selected services through the required random selection process. We also worked with the GIS group to create a web-based platform so residents could get online and look with their address to find out what their service line was and what our findings were. We completed this, the water service, we determined that all elements were addressed and no lead service lines were found in our water system. Our findings were submitted and approved by Washington State Department of Health, and we met the deadline by October 10 of 2024. In addition to maintenance activities such as water main cleaning, fire hydrant maintenance, water distribution, water distribution valve exercising, and daily service requests and emergencies, there's been a lot of projects that's been completed since last year. As you can see, this map represents all the projects since I was here last year. As part of the 2025 water main improvements, these three jobs listed above were awarded and completed by a local contractor in various locations of the city. I'm sure you guys know the downtown improvements on Smith Street between State Avenue and Route Road. Another one was Derbyshire Neighborhood at 272nd and 118, between 118th and 120th. And then also West Valley, just north of Smith Brothers Farms. We did an extension there. Also, last year, I touched on these two projects that were in motion. These jobs are now wrapping up. They're on the schedule to be completed as far as road restoration and put back in In-house work that our in-house staff has completed, this is the Clark Springs Shoulder Improvement Job that we did. This project was, was completed by in-house staff. Approximately two miles of shoulder cleanup was done. 25 dump trucks, approximately 270 tons of material was taken out of these shoulders and hauled away and disposed of. As part of this project, we also installed 800 feet of log barrier on our eastern property to the Clark Springs site there. And so that was a huge improvement. Also, in-house crews worked up in Derbyshire, not too far from the other job that the contractor did. They're still actually finishing this right now. Water main is all in, though, it's in service. Services have been completed and they're just kind of finishing up with this. And this is at 275th between 118th and 120th. They replaced a 4-inch AC pipe with an 8-inch ductal iron. Another job done in-house this year was at our Blue Boy site. Crews installed 300 feet of 12-inch pipe there to tie in our pump station one into the east side of that property into the 640 zone. Also, Ian touched on this. This was done by our in-house crew, too. This is Cambridge Tank. Again, this is just showing some pictures of them where they've cut the valves in, put the pipe in, and we're setting a vault right there and finalizing to put the lid on. We are currently planning and designing the improvements of our pump station four site, which is up on the West Hill. We're just getting ready to install or actually replace some isolation valves in those four locations where the circles are. And then we're also installing a large vault that's going to house an 8-inch magnetic meter. That's going to be an upgrade that we're starting here probably next month. Water Department staff has done a great job with all these projects and improvements that I've talked about today. But here's some facts that we didn't touch on. The crews also have to maintain 290 miles of water main, 16,000 surfaces, 10 water reservoirs that hold 30 million gallons of storage, seven pump stations, 11,000 isolation valves, 3,000 fire hydrants to produce over 2.8 billion gallons of water to the city of Kent annually. I'm proud to say that I'm part of this team. We have a highly experienced staff. We have a highly experienced staff with vast knowledge of the water system. We take pride in the work that we do. I'm proud to be part of this highly skilled organization with this group of 25 employees that work and maintain the water system combined of experience. We have about 350 years of experience. I would like to conclude this and let you know that our sources are looking good and that we're on track for all planned projects to be completed. It's our goal to continue to provide safe and reliable drinking water to our residents and businesses throughout the city. Thank you, council. experience, we have about 350 years of experience. I would like to conclude this and let you know that our sources are looking good and that we're on track for all planned projects to be completed. It's our goal to continue to provide safe and reliable drinking water to our residents and businesses throughout the city. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Paul and Ian. Great job, and always good to hear that we have high-quality water for our residents. And I think Councilmember Boy... Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. You did make a statement about good water. Up on the West Hill, so we've got that new water tank that's up and running.
It's been running since May of last year.
And no issues and everything's going good?
Not one.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Councilmember, it is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have a lot of longevity.
Councilmember Frincher.
Just going to let Councilmember Boy know that it's a good-looking tank, too. I mean aesthetically, I had my doubts when it was going in, you know, thinking of this big monstrosity there, needed, but still how it was going to blend, and residents have commented on it, so good job.
That's awesome. Good.
All right. I think that concludes the presentation. Thank you so much. Great job, and we love hearing that we have the best water. I like to say we do have the best water because I actually don't like the quality of water anywhere else I go. I drink tap water at home, but when I go other places, it's kind of hard. So I really appreciate all the work that you do and your group, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are adjourned until 7 o'clock for council meeting.